Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our first regular meeting for 2024. This meeting will also include our organizational meeting for the year. 2024 is kind of a special year for Albert County. On February 13th of 1874, we were actually formed as a county. So as we roll in, we've been doing some research on the older minute. So we'll have little tidbits of what was actually going on 150 years ago for each of the meetings. But as of today, 150 years ago, we were still part of Douglas County, which extended all the way to the Kansas border at that point. So 150 years ago, Frankstown is where lots of the meetings were taking place. Anyway, but for today, before we get going, I would like to invite Mr. Barry Lemley up to provide an invocation and lead us in the pledge. Barry?
Let's bow our heads and pray. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for all this wonderful moisture you have been giving us. Lord, what a blessing to live in a county that still honors you and loves you and holds you up high. Lord, watch over these men and give them wisdom to make these decisions today and future decisions. In these, in this name, in your name, we pray. Amen.
All righty, it's 9:02. We'll formally start the meeting. Emily, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Thayer?
Here.
Commissioner Richardson?
Here.
Commissioner Schroder?
Here.
All righty. We have an agenda that was published at the end of last week. I don't believe there are any changes. I would accept a motion to approve as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. A few items on consent. I would accept a motion for those.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent items as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the items on consent. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to elected officials, Department head staff reports. We have a guest today. Darlene Carpio from Congressman Buck's office has a quick update. So thank you.
Good morning and thank you for this time on your, on your agenda. A few updates from the congressman's office. And the first one, I'm sure that you know, is he's announced he is not running again to fill that seat in District Four. I had somebody recently tell me this is going to be a knife fight in a phone booth. What about a dozen people? So it's going to be an interesting year for sure. And you know, as staff, of course, we are wondering, what does that look like for us in 2024? What's going to change for us? Have our goals changed? Has our direction from the office and from the congressman changed? We had several staff meetings in December, and really, our direction is do your job. He's still the congressman. He has a year left in this term. He still serves on committees, and he still has a vote. So he needs the input from us in the district to know exactly what the priorities are and how we can support you. So that's our intent, is to continue that in this year. So continue to stay in touch. As far as the House goes, they were back in session last night after the Christmas break. Their priority is going to be budget and funding our government. We're now nine days from the potential lack of funds to keep four of our appropriation sectors from being funded on January the 19th. Those sectors include ag, water, and energy. So all three hugely important to District Four. So we'll be watching those closely. As of this morning, Speaker Johnson was talking to his colleagues that he felt like they had reached some level of understanding with the White House. And at this time, it was strictly around appropriations. No additional funding for Ukraine, Israel, Taiwan, and nothing to do with the border. So there's going to be work ahead. No matter what they get done for our appropriations, there's a ton of work to do on those other three elements. You know, one thing that I might just share quickly is in December, I had the opportunity to spend about the first half of the month in DC taking a class on congressional operations, which was incredibly interesting. I'm glad I had the opportunity. Kind of wish I'd done it about eight years ago. But it was very interesting. We got to sit in on committee hearings for the Senate and the House and then do a whole lot of reporting back to our class. But I felt like I learned a lot and hopefully can be a little bit more valuable to working with our DC staff. That's always a challenge, how we communicate, but it was a great opportunity. So enough from me. Thank you for your time, and is there any questions I can answer?
Thank you very much. Do you have any questions or comments for Darlene?
Okay, thank you.
Oh, appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any elected officials that have reports? I'm not seeing any. Staff? Monty? Yeah, I came in this morning. I saw somebody taking the public works sign off that old building out.
Yeah. Good morning, Commissioners. Imani Hankins, Albert County Public Works Director. I did want to provide you an update on the new facility up there east of the post office. We obtained our CO on December 14th. That was a Thursday. We began to start moving operations up there that following Monday on December 18th. It's been quite a move. You're talking many, many decades of, you know, stuff rat-holed in our, in our old facility. So it's been, you know, filling some dumpsters and moving what's appropriate. We're pretty much moved completely out of this building down here. The old facility is empty, and we've tried to remove some stuff to make it easier for, if that's repurposed, to something else. Beyond that, we're still in the process of moving the fairgrounds where we have occupied up at the north end of the fairgrounds. All that equipment, culverts, things of that nature, we're still in process of moving that. I would say we're about 30% moved out of there. With the holidays and the snowstorms that have been coming, it has slowed that process down somewhat. But I would, I would expect within the next four weeks, we should be out of, up there. We will leave the mag chloride tanks until springtime, just because that's going to take quite a bit of upfitting and change over at the new facility to get those up there. The two fuel tanks that are down here west of the old shop, those will go and be repurposed up at our property up at 166, where we have our salt sand shed up there. And new fuel tanks will be in operation within the next three weeks down here at the, at the new facility. We are going to host a public open house at the new facility. That will be on Tuesday, February 13th, all day long. We'll just have the doors open. People can come in. We'll give them tours. I have water and snacks available for the public to come and see what the new facility's all about. The last two storms we've had, we've operated out of there. Man, has that been nice, because all the snowplow trucks were parked inside. Obviously nowadays, with technology and apps and such, we know well in advance of when the storm's coming. So we preloaded them. So when the guys, the scheduled plow crews here, there isn't an hour and a half of lag time of loading up the trucks, you know, warming them up, doing all that, they're already ready to go. The guys just, you know, do their walk around, check the oil, that kind of thing, and they're out on the road. So that, that has greatly increased us getting out and, and being proactive in de-icing operations and things of that nature. So it's made a huge difference. Do you guys have any questions?
Just a quick question. The fuel tanks, are they going to be above ground or below ground?
They're above ground. Yeah. Below ground, there's a whole lot more to the state aspect of it with inspections and, and that kind of thing. So above ground, they're double wall, you know, tanks, so they don't need to sit in containment. They're self-contained. So are the tanks we have down here right now. They'll be a little bit bigger. These tanks down here are 1,500 gallons each. Those up there will be 5,000 gallons each.
So you can take a full, full load of fuel?
Yeah, which, you know, is, cuts down on our delivery fees associated with fuel purchase. It'll, in the long run, save, save money.
Long time getting there.
Oh, it's, it has been a huge blessing. It's very nice. We're still working out a few IT issues up there as far as the office side. We do have an admin still in this, in this building, but she will be moving up very shortly up there. And I think with our new IT director, we're quickly getting some of the IT issues worked out.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. Any other staff comments for things that aren't on the agenda? Okay, not seeing any. We'll open for citizen public comment at this time. Some opportunity for anybody that has something to share with us that is not on the agenda. Ask that you keep your remarks to about three minutes and provide your name and address for the clerk. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, Sunny Mills, 27310 Forest Ridge Drive, Kiowa. Okay, so I'm going to be here to harp on Power Pathway once again. I know they haven't submitted anything yet, but I think we still need to keep our eye on the ball. In addition, I am concerned about the Homestead Act. I'm not sure if that's the right term. Mr. Thayer, you had recommended when I said, I'm, we're in our 70s, we've lived in our home a long time, and how can we protect ourselves against taxes being raised? And so I went down to property tax and tried to get that filled out, a paper. And they said they only take the applications January through July. And that, I stopped in twice to ask, maybe thinking I had the wrong person or something. And no, I couldn't apply till January, even though we had been within the timeframe allowed and everything in November and December. But they wouldn't give me an application, and they wouldn't take an application. I'm not sure what that's about, but I'd sure like you to look into that for me. I will walk down there and get another application, but I'm thinking that I'm not even sure in this year, I think you have to, they said they weren't sure that you were going to approve it for this year, 2024. It wasn't a possibility. So I don't know what that's all about, but I sure would appreciate it, along with a lot of other people who are over 70. All right, so getting back to the Power Pathway. Several people were told that by Excel engineers, that they have lots of insurance. And so they don't have to really worry about a fire. Four people, myself included, so I actually heard that, which was pretty shocking. So I started investigating, and I found that after the Marshall Fire, some of the attorneys that were handling some of the insurance problems were Robbins Cloud LLC, L L O P. Hit phone number 720-753-5059. Some of the things that were interesting, it makes a very interesting reading, is some of the lawsuits included years of homelessness, lost business and personal income, loss of occupation and professions, loss of wind and solar arrays, loss of livestock, loss of farms, loss of equipment, loss of wells, loss of irrigation, loss of oil and natural gas facilities.
Commissioners, that's three minutes.
Erosion costs, evacuation costs, out-of-pocket expenses for business in private homes, emotional distress, long-term psychological impacts, respiratory diseases, personal property to include antique vehicles, tools, and equipment, damage to trees and vegetation and pastage, water pollution from fire contaminants, and the list goes on and on. Please look it up. It's very interesting reading.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Do we have anybody else? Morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Don Gray, 16,000 Highway 86. Happy New Year, everybody. Just an update on what we're getting in the field from Excel. As promised, their land agents are working up and down this preferred route, reaching out to a lot of landowners, not so much to all of the landowners, which is kind of interesting. The general gist of it is they don't miss an opportunity at the end of their conversations to tell each of these landowners they will use eminent domain. Now, in their propaganda that they write at the beginning, they say that's their last, last resort that they're going to work with. But it's kind of interesting to the landowners that are being approached, that in their conversations, that is the bottom line. It's, it's a tactic that they're going to use to move forward. I'm trying to get a clear answer on who actually has authority to initiate eminent domain. Several lawyers have spoke to it. They have a different opinion on where that's going to actually come from and what it's going to look like. But it's just a basic update of what's going on out there. As promised, Excel is working through the county despite, I assume, no contact with the county as an application has not been applied for. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment at this time? Sure.
Morning. Dan Mason, I live two miles east of town here on County Road 134. I'd like to talk about the illegal alien invasion that's happening and the impact it's having on our county. But first, I'd like to comment for Mr. Buck's office. He's leaving office, as was noted. I've looked into Mr. Buck's voting record, and, you know, he's, he's voted against the Constitution of the United States 30% of the time, according to a very conservative rating service, which is very reliable and has been established for a long time. I know Mr. Buck's been against the war on constitutional grounds, I believe, but in my opinion, he hasn't been forceful enough on it. He should be standing against the war and all the spending and getting Americans involved in this, these illegal wars overseas like Ukraine and Israel shouldn't be happening. So I noticed also Mr. Buck's net wealth had increased by fourfold in the time that he's been in office. So it's not uncommon in Congress these days that they go into office and come out far wealthier than they ever were to begin with. As far as the illegal invasion, alien invasion in this country, I don't call them immigrants. I call them illegal aliens, because for the most part, that's what they actually are. They're here, they defy our laws, they defy our system, they have no respect for us, as far as I can tell for the most part. What is the cost? $1,200 per year per taxpayer is what an illegal alien is costing us, each one of us here in this room. So 20 people times 1,200, what's that? It's a large, it's a fair amount of money. So that's money we don't have to spend. They come in, they ask for free education, health care, driver's license, they want to be able to vote. What's the impact in our county on the sheriff's office in terms of the load he has to carry? What about the food and electrical loads on our grid? Things like that all increase. The roads get worn down more, I guess. You could consider that. Places like Illinois are going to make policemen out of illegal aliens. New York, they want them to vote. The schools would be, one school has been closed in New York City recently to house illegal aliens because of the weather. So how long before all of that comes here to our county? It's come to our state already. In Denver, they're using a hotel and probably more than one hotel to house illegal aliens right now. So it has an impact on us. And according to one official within the county, there's 8,000 illegal aliens within the county right now. So what kind of an impact and load does that have? The person will rename, will not be named by me because they've asked me not to name them.
Commissioners, that's three minutes.
I asked, how do they know that? And the person replied to me that, well, just take a drive around through the outside, through the county anywhere, all the open areas, and look around, all the trailers that are there. And I've had a similar experience years ago, finding that to be true. I don't know. I would urge Mr. Buck also to take a really firm stand against J-6 incarceration of all the January 6 people who are illegally incarcerated right now. And their, their due process has been taken away from them. They've been in, yeah, well, you know, they've been incarcerated for a long time without any kind of trial or charges. So please take action.
Thank you, sir. Carrie?
Good morning. Carrie Giblitz, 19656 Weidemeyer Road, Kiowa, on the board of Albert County Environment Alliance. I have nothing new to say to you. I've been standing up here for two years saying the same thing. But with the new year, I did reflect a little bit on how far we've come. And I do think we've made some progress. I looked at my notes over the past two years, and Excel had originally told us that they wanted to file their application with the county December of 2000, sorry, 2022. So it's, it's a past a year after that, and they still haven't filed. So that was it, just my reflection, and wondered if you had any more news for us. So thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else? Okay, seeing none in the room. My understanding, we did not receive any email comment and nobody that wished to be called for comment by phone. So closed public comment at this time. Briefly to Ms. Mills' comment, Homestead exemption is actually going to be taken up by the legislature. It is annually. Actually started session today up in, in Denver. That was something that had been part of Proposition HH to double the exemption and make it portable. That wasn't addressed during the special session because they felt they could look at that during this year's regular session prior to, that starts today. So, yeah. So I, I do sit on the statewide task force for property taxation, and that is one of the items that we're definitely going to recommend if they haven't taken it up by the time, by March, when we make our recommendations. But both the, again, increasing it because costs have obviously increased and so, of homes have increased in property taxes, but also the portability. So folks that may be rambling around in big old homes can downsize but not lose that, that benefit. We haven't, just to confirm, we, we haven't received anything additional from Excel. I would say for the use of eminent domain is, I, something I, I don't doubt that they would use were they to get approval of a route. Without approval, they don't have any authority. So it may be a bit premature to say they will use a power they don't have available to them unless a route is actually approved through the county. Any comments?
One of the things I want to compliment the, the public along the, the proposed, sort of proposed, route, route, and I appreciate all the input that each of you have made to our, our meetings. As you know, we've got regulations that they'll have to follow. At least we expect them to have to follow. So we'll, again, we're, we're waiting for the application.
And then, Mr. Richardson, I do appreciate your comments, so. So public comment is closed. We're going to move on to, since this is our, our first formal meeting of the year, we'll take this opportunity to also conduct the, what's called our organizational meeting. So it's kind of a meeting within a meeting, but it's 9:25, so we will be opening our organizational meeting for the year. Emily, could you call the roll?
You want me to make the motion first?
Well, yeah, I guess that would make sense.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we open our organizational meeting for 2024.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to open our org meeting for 2024. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, motion carries. We're in our org meeting. Emily, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Thayer?
Here.
Commissioner Richardson?
Here.
Commissioner Schroder?
Here.
So the organizational meeting's statutory requirement, it's essentially consists of one lengthy resolution that includes appointments to commissions and committees throughout the, the county's specific capabilities that we may not have where we've appointed people. Mr. John DeValle is our medical officer to provide input to public health, et cetera, our planning commission. It sets our general operating hours and holidays for the county. It establishes or reestablishes our paper of record as, as the ranchland news. But the, within that is designation of the, the chair and vice chair for this year. I would accept a motion for appointment of a chairman.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion for Chris Richardson to continue as chair.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for reappointment of myself as the chair for the B O C C. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, I am happy to serve, and I'll keep doing it until I get it right, or I'm termed out. So both of which, well, hopefully one of those happens before the end of my term. So with that, we have a motion on the, on the floor. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Our second is to appoint a vice chair to perform my duties in the absence of the chair, if I'm asked.
Mr. Chairman, I have served as the vice chair for several years, and I'm proud to have done it. But as I look forward to the future, I think we need to plan for the future. And one of the things I would like to suggest, and I will make the appointment of Dallas Schroder as the vice chair, and my thinking there is that'll give him experience for when Chris and I are termed out in one year. And then when, and there'll be two newly electeds that will be serving. And I think it'd be appropriate to have Dallas there as acting chairman until they go through this procedure next year.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? I will second it. So any discussion?
I, I do accept, and I appreciate the sentiment and looking to the future. I think it, it will make things cleaner in the future. I appreciate it.
So we have a motion and a second. And have had discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Great, okay. So with that, so Grant will now occupy our unofficial position as senior statesman of the board. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And then with that, the, those were the two blanks. I think we have a planning commissioner to, to add. So if we could get a motion that approves the resolution with the addition of that planning commission, I think that'll be the cleanest way.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution presented to us of the organizational meeting, the 2024 appointments and reappointments, and also to include John W. Gresham as a planning commissioner for District Two, first term expiring December 31st, 2026.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the organizational resolution with the inclusion of the previous votes for chair and vice chair and this one gentleman for planning commission in District Two. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. I accept a motion to close our organizational meeting at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we close the organization for 2024 meeting at this time.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to close the organizational meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. So re-return to the regular. Aye, motion carries, so re-return to the regular B O C C meeting that was ongoing, and we'll move on to discussion items. The first item we have are just, these are discussion, not approvals at this time, but updates proposed for the county attorney's policy, Bart?
As far as updates to, um, policy, I'm looking at both the county attorney policy and the finance policy together, and I'll also speak about the well path contract as well. But there's a couple of updates that need to be made based on statute, um, updates to that, things that we've run into just in, in operational basis as a county, where, um, certain changes or tweaks to how we do things in the finance department or how we process certain things, it's just going to be more efficient. And, um, the risk management aspect is, is there. So one of the things that we're going to be doing is, while I already review essentially the, the contracts for the county, um, there will now be a line item or a, a signature line indicating that something that's been reviewed is approved as deformed by the county attorney's office. And so that will establish that, that county, or that contract has been reviewed and is approved as deformed, and so that's the, that's the major thing. Smaller changes in the other areas. And to kind of close out the discussion items, um, as far as the well path contract, we're waiting on very minimal, one additional change that has been requested with regard to the terms and conditions of that, and that's in relation to the healthcare that is provided to the residents of the jail.
Sorry, just so for folks for track, and that was inmate medical support?
That's correct.
Any questions or comments? Yeah, so I guess we'll, are we generally on, I guess, on a path to have language and, and updates to approve? I know the well path contract, that's going to potentially be some negotiation back and forth with the carrier, but for the policies, are we safe to move those for action at our next meeting, or?
Yeah, I, I think it's fair to say that we should have, um, final draft language that is ready to go for our next B O C C meeting.
Okay, thank you. Um, do we have any public input on these discussion items? Seeing none, I think we did cover all three pretty well. We just wanted to get them on the agenda, so there was some public knowledge that we're looking at those. Um, so moving on to action items, the first we have is consideration of the December thirteenth minutes.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three and dispense with the reading of those minutes.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three minutes and dispense with the reading. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. That meeting did roll into a second day with a land use hearing, so I'd accept a motion to approve the minutes from December fourteenth.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes from December fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three and dispense with the reading of those minutes.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second for, to approve the December fourteenth meeting minutes and dispense with the reading, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. And finally, consideration of the December twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three minutes. That was the meeting in which we approved the, the budget for this year, all in favor, or I guess I will take a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from December twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three and dispense with the reading of those minutes.
Second.
And now we have a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, so the final is, uh, consideration of approval of a resolution regarding contractor licensing fees for twenty-twenty-four. These were discussed at our previous two meetings, the, uh, and this will formally document the decision that we're extending any licensure that was applied for in the, in twenty-twenty-three through the end of twenty-twenty-four, will only require licensing applications for, for new folks doing business in the county. Uh, and this was based on a concern that we were potentially had set fees too high and were over-collecting more than was needed to run the program. But with the hail storms, we had kind of an anomaly, so we want to make sure that, one, we're not over-collecting, but get a better snapshot of data over several years before we make any final decisions on either reducing the licensing fees or, or extending the period of, of licenses when they're applied for, so.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the resolution regarding contractor licensing fees for twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for, to approve the resolution that was provided regarding contractor licensing fees. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. All righty, for board planning, we'll take the attorney policy and finance policy for, for action. Potentially well path, if that's ready to go, we'll, we'll take that to action. If not, we'll keep it on for discussion. Have any other items? We also will be holding a special meeting on the seventeenth, and the purpose of that is to acknowledge and approve for collection mill levies for other taxing authorities within the county that the treasurer is responsible for collecting and dispersing to. But beyond that, um, we have no other business this morning. This afternoon, we'll be hearing an S U R for a dog breeding facility and some proposed service plans. That, those will be, those hearings will be held at one P M. at this location, so the time is now nine-thirty-seven and we're in recess.